Good evening. Today is April 9, 2024. The time is now 5:30 PM. This meeting of Georgetown County Council is being called to order. I see that we do have a quorum present for this particular meeting, and we welcome you all to Georgetown County Council Meeting. We will open up our meeting with the invocation from Councilor Carolina, and he will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Almighty and eternal Father, we praise and thank you for calling us to serve your people. Continue to give us your anointing and help us to be that vessel of your grace to touch the lives of your people. Father, use us as a channel of your compassion. Help us to be worthy of your trust that we may be your instrument of peace and hope to all in Georgetown County. Give us courage to be an agent of change, to achieve your dream of transformation. Finally, we ask you to heal our land and restore faith and righteousness in our nation. This we ask in your name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilor Carolina. It's really good seeing all of you here this evening to see how your county government works. Thanks for being here. We will move on down to the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda as published?
So moved.
It is moved by Councilor Carolina. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Newton. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We have our special report and presentation. As you know, the Bernal Foundation normally selects a nonprofit organization to make a presentation to the council. Tonight, our presentation will be by Ms. Brenda Perkins on behalf of Brown's Ferry Community Outreach. Ms. Perkins.
Good evening. Thank you, Chairman, along with the board. My name is Brenda Perkins. I am the CEO and President of Brown's Ferry Community Outreach. My reason here today is to show you an outline of what our organization is doing and how we are supporting the community. Brown's Ferry Community Outreach was established in March 1st of 2017. We are partnering with other organizations to reach the rural area. We know that we have a lot of resources in Georgetown County, but the community in the rural area does not know how to access those resources that we already have in place. So I did not start the organization to reproduce anything that has already been done. What we want to do is connect with the resources that's already here and bring them to the rural area. Right now, we're partnering with Clemson Extension. They are providing a healthy eating class out in the Brown's Ferry community at St. Paul AME Church. We partner with Black River United Way. They are partnering with us to provide an after-school program and a three-week summer program. For those of you that don't know, Brown's Ferry community does not have an after-school program, nor did we have a summer enrichment program. Our kids would have to travel to Plantersville to attend a summer program. So we saw the need, and we partnered with Black River United Way along with the Bernal Foundation to put on this program that we started last year. We also partner with Duke Endowment, Georgetown County School District. The program that we provide is servicing at Brown's Ferry Elementary School. We partner with, like I said before, Francis Bernal Foundation. We partner with Walkham Off Foundation, Georgetown County Diabetes Core Group, South Carolina Thrive to present a parenting program. We provide Parenting Program Level 2, 3, and 4. That program works for the family that has challenging kids to help them connect to resources and give them another way to look at handling the child that they're having the problem with. We also are partnering with YMCA to bring a health exercise class out into the area, Brown's Ferry Community Outreach community as well. That will be held at St. Paul AME Church. And the reason that it's being there because Mount Sonai already has a food pantry as well as the church in Dunbar, Monalla. So we don't want to duplicate services. We want to bring things to the community that we don't already have. As you already know, you know, we have a high rate of diabetes in our area. So we're trying to come up with healthy eating habits as well as exercising so we can deter that and help them with their health. So what Brown's Ferry community does, we have a mission. Our mission is to provide resources, support, assistance to community during challenging times. So like I said before, when you come out to the rural area, you don't see people out there telling them what already exists. So my main reason, my why, was my family. My dad was diagnosed with congestive heart failure back in 90. He was working for Georgetown Steel, so our family was accustomed to a good lifestyle. But when he was diagnosed with congestive heart failure, he could not get health insurance simply because of his income. Those of you that are familiar with Medicaid, if you're over a certain guideline with your income, you can't get Medicaid. So if you get disability, you have to wait two years to get Medicaid. So in turn, he had to join Cobra Insurance. When he joined Cobra Insurance, his income at the time was $1,400 a month. $500 of that had to go to Cobra Insurance. Me, living in the rural area, we knew, we knew, we knew of no resources that can help us. So my family, our three oldest siblings, had to then help. My dad had six kids. The three oldest of us had to help my mom pay this Cobra Insurance as well as keep our bills going for two years until my dad could get insurance. And I know a lot of other families that are suffering with some of these same issues. So that's why I started this organization. My passion is giving back to the community. Any resources that you know that I don't know of, I've given you each one my brochure as well as my contact number, the organization number on there as well as my personal number. Please reach out to me. Brown's Ferry Community Outreach is also a part of the Pelmedal Giving Day that will be held on May 7th and 8th. So please find it in your heart to donate to Brown's Ferry Community Outreach when you can, not only on Pelmedal Giving Day. You can donate to us at any time. We have a website, which is www.brownso outreach.org. You can go to our website. And if anyone wants any other information, please reach out to me. I'm always available, and we're looking for your support, not only the board, but everyone in this room. Please help us when you can. And what we also do too, if we run across a family that's dealing with cancer and they can't afford their medication, we help them with that as well. And we also help them get to their doctor's appointment if they can't get their doctor's appointment. So that's what Brown's Ferry Community Outreach is all about, and we're looking for your support. And if anyone has any questions for me, I'll be glad to answer.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Any questions from council?
Ms. Perkins, job well done and the continuation of your program. Primarily, how are you deriving your funds to support your program?
Right now, we have funding from Bernal as well as the other organizations I named. Also secured a grant from Walk, from Community Health Worker affiliations because we have three certified community health workers. We also go into the homes. We can, we are certified to go into the homes to assess anyone, any family. If we go into the home and we see a need, we can connect them to, to resources. So we have grant funding from the Community Health Worker Alliance, and we have grant funding from Bernal Foundation. We also do fundraising. We just had our first fundraiser back in February, which was our African Wukanda Catwalk, which was successful. So we do fundraiser and we have a grant right. So we are securing grants that way to help, help our community.
Okay, and how many on your staff?
We have three community health workers. We have an accounting. We have a part-time administrator, and we also have a social worker.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any further questions coming? Ms. Perkins, prior to your sitting, what are, what are some of the programs you have brought to the community already?
Right now, like I, we actually are housed in the choppy complex thanks to Ms. Beth. We're out there with Diabetes Core Group. Right now, we can help people do Medicaid application. We can help them do food stamp application. We can help them do Well Vista application. And those that don't know what Well Vista is, is if we run across someone that doesn't have any health insurance and they need their medication as well, we can do a Well Vista application, and their medicine will be mailed directly to their home. We are in partnership now with St. James Health and Wellness, where if we run into someone that needs a primary care provider and they have not seen a doctor, we can get them to go to St. James Health and Wellness, and they have a voucher where you can be seen for free if you haven't been seen by a doctor within a year. And like I said, we're doing the Healthy Family Class now. We're also doing the exercise class, the after-school program. In June, we will start our second summer enrichment program at Brown's Ferry Elementary School, which is a transition program to helping the kids from 4th and 5th grade transition over easy into the middle school at Carvis Bay Middle School.
And I think you originally just had a partnership with the University of South Carolina School of Law to bring a legal program to the community also.
Right, what we did, we hosted a class with them. They brought some attorneys to the area to do free wills and power of attorney. They came out to the church, they bought their van, they had their own internet, everything set up. All we had to provide was the space. It was free. Everyone could come out and we serviced over that particular day. We did 21 people. They got free wills and power of attorney, which is needed in our area.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Yeah, thank you for all you do for Georgetown County and the residents here. We really appreciate you. Thank you. Okay, we will move on down to our public comments. A public comment period is included on each meeting agenda and shall be limited to 30 minutes. Each speaker will be limited to no more than three minutes. No speaker may yield his or her a lot of time to another speaker. Members of the public who wish to address council during the public input period should sign up with the clerk of council before the meeting is called to order. Please note that there's a countdown timer on their screen, and we ask you to abide by that particular timer. When the timer reaches its designated time, we ask you to conclude your comment. We would appreciate you abiding by that. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone sign up to speak this evening?
Mr. Chairman, we do have 15 individuals signed up to speak tonight. So each will have up to two minutes to speak. And our first is Mr. Don Park.
Stan Park with the Air Force Group. I'm here for the Tannen rezoning. First off, I want to say good afternoon. Thank you for everyone for coming out tonight. We really appreciate everyone's time and specifically want to thank council members and Keep It Green and staff for taking time to meet with us and discuss this project. This project has been in the works for a very long time, and we appreciate everyone's input along the way. We give every, we give everyone a little bit, to give everyone a little bit of background on this project, we initially wanted to come in and resume this property to general residential after hearing from the public about their fears and this turning into a possible multifamily project. We were requested by staff and Keep It Green to change the zoning to an FDD in order to ensure that the single-family request could not be changed in the future. We created the FDD document and received full support from Keep It Green and were approved by a planning commission. We have reviewed all of the public comments that have been sent to us, and most frequently mentioned concerns included flooding, increased traffic, increased density, stopping development altogether, and this becoming an affordable housing community. These are the facts about the project. Number one, zoning. This project is currently zoned as general commercial in the front, general residential in the middle, and conservation preservation over the salt marsh. This is consistent with all the other properties on that side of Highway 17. What we're asking for is a down zoning. This is a reduction in density and reduce setbacks to allow the residents not be forced to build right on top of the existing businesses. Trees, number two, trees. Our project is designed to preserve as many trees as possible. We are incorporating low-impact design practices to reduce the impacts on the land and preserve as much of the natural beauty of the site as possible. Number three, stormwater and flooding. The site will conform to every engineering standard and regulation as set forth by Georgetown County and the state of South Carolina, period. County Council. Sorry. I had a little more, but we can get to it in a minute.
Thank you. Thank you.
Dan, Stacy?
Prior to Mr. Stacy speaking, please note, I forgot to mention to you, please note that councilors prohibited from commenting, making any response to any comments made by the public at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Morant. I actually represent David Tanner. I'm not involved with the rezoning. I represent the landowner individually in the sale. This is the team that is doing the zoning work. But I wanted to clarify a couple of things for council out of an email I saw that was circulated around, trying to probably paint some areas of ambiguity that do not need to be there. The first is some issues about this property coming in and out of a trust more than, you know, 15, 18 years ago. And some concern that it wasn't published. I think any attorney with a basic understanding of trusts understands that there is no requirement ever that a trust agreement be published in the public record. We only adopted a trust certification process a few years ago to put summaries of trust, but then the substance is still not there. This trust was a simple revocable trust used for estate planning purposes, and there are zero restrictions in the trust having to do with anything with land used for this piece of property. It appears to be a little bit disingenuous to try to insinuate that there was some inappropriate conduct on behalf of Mr. Tanner for moving property into and out of a trust years ago. There's been some questions about inappropriate tax benefits, and that was also in the email talking points. And point out that this tract is large enough to qualify for agricultural tax exemption. He took advantage of the state law to qualify for an agricultural tax exemption, and that's all there is to it. There is nothing more there. It qualifies, he took advantage of it, much like Burris and Chapin has millions of dollars' worth of land growing pine trees in downtown Myrtle Beach paying $3.60 an acre. It is the state law, and there is nothing inappropriate. And there have been some discussions about wetlands and whether he refused to allow an additional consultant to come on the site. There was no reason to do that. The consultant is here, he will speak. But this is the same consultant that's done every wetland delineation for Georgetown County for the past 20 years, and we have a Corps of Engineers letter in hand setting what the wetlands are for this site. So there was simply no reason to have an additional consultant on the site. I'm sure the development team will have more. Thank you very much.
Dwayne Draper?
Good evening, Dwayne Draper, Keep It Green. I'm here to speak to ordinance 24-05 and ordinance 24-06 concerning 8.3 acres referred to as the Magic Oaks subdivision. These ordinances were deferred at the March 12th County Council meeting on a unanimous vote. There were concerns about actual wetlands delineation pending a review by the Army Corps of Engineers and about how and why the property was designated as conservation preservation for more than 15 years. Further research was requested to answer these questions and is now back before you without more clarification being offered. Concerns have been expressed about the amount of wetlands on the property by a county councilor, a planning commissioner, a budding neighbors, and local citizens groups. The initial wetlands delineation survey performed by the Brigham Company in January 2024 used two data points for testing, which were very close to each other near the northern boundary of the property. Both DP1 and DP2 indicated the presence of hydrophytic or water-loving vegetation in excess of 50% as determined by the dominance test. Additionally, DP2 demonstrated that hydrology criteria was met, indicating that site is inundated or saturated for sufficient time to develop hydric soils. As part of the Brigham Company's report, a request was made to the Army Corps of Engineers on January 25th of 2024 to review their report and verify the findings issuing a verification letter. A letter from the Corps dated April 5th, 2024, just last Friday, stated that based on the information submitted, the delineated boundaries, quote, "are a reasonable representation of the aquatic resources located on site." It is not stated and not clear at all if the site visit actually occurred. We would recommend this be remanded back to the Planning Commission for further study and clarification. Thank you.
Carrie Salibi?
What was his name? Carrie. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name's Carrie Salibi and I'd like to address what I believe to be a key issue regarding the Tanner property ordinance second reading, which is on your agenda tonight. As we all know, the Tanner property is being considered for significant residential development. While it is a fairly large piece of property, it is located in an area adjacent to commercially developed property as well as a number of private residences. The owners of the adjacent residences, most of whom have been there for decades, have expressed concern about developing a property which, based on their observations, is often wet and subject to standing water and sometimes flowing water. As part of their concern, they have proposed to the owner of the property to pay for a wetland study of the property. The owner has refused access to the property for the study and instead stands by a wetland study done at his direction. I respectfully request that this issue be returned to the planning commission for reconsideration. The well and study done by the owner cannot be considered independent since it was paid for and done at his direction. This creates at least the appearance of a conflict of interest, even if none was intended. In situations like this, it seems to me that in order to assure the rights of both the owner and the adjoining property owners as well as the rights of the general community, an independent wetland study of the property needs to be done. In my experience, this is a normal business practice in situations like this where conflicts of interest must be avoided in order to assure fairness to all of those concerned. Thank you very much.
Jill Holt?
Good evening. My name is Dr. Jill Holt. I'm an educator here in Georgetown County. I'm here to shed light on a crucial aspect often overlooked in discussions about property rights and zoning changes. While these topics are undeniably vital to our community's well-being, there's a significant issue concerning Mr. Tanner's property that demands our attention. County taxes pay a vital role in financing essential infrastructure like roads and more importantly, funding of our schools. Contrary to popular belief, it is the tax, the county tax base that primarily sustains our local education system, not state or federal allocations. Currently, Mr. Tanner benefits from an agricultural exemption on his property, granting him substantially reduced tax rates for over two decades. Over these 20-plus years, by my calculations, Mr. Tanner has avoided paying taxes in amount that likely exceeds $1 million. That's a staggering amount of resources that could have been significantly, could have significantly bolstered our education system. Imagine the impact, additional teachers, support for at-risk programs, or investments in career education facilities, all deprived due to these tax exemptions. Our children are our future and they are struggling. And now, after benefiting personally from these tax exemptions, Mr. Tanner seeks to further capitalize on his property through zoning changes. By voting to approve these changes hastily, are you prioritizing immediate gains over the long-term well-being of our community? Is it your stance that a few more weeks of due diligence to safeguard our citizens, especially our children, are too much to ask? Are we willing to sacrifice their future for unchecked development? I implore this council to consider the gravity of this decision. Our children's future is not negotiable. They deserve the opportunity to thrive unencumbered by the burden of underfunded services that lead directly to a better future for them and for all of your children. It is my sincerest hope that you will take the time needed to ensure that $1 million isn't the price tag on our children's dreams and aspirations. Thank you.
Mickey Stikus?
This rezoning application should be denied on multiple grounds. This has been described as a down zoning issue as a practical matter. The issue that this action will impose on adjacent property owners is more complex. I submit that major issues involve negative impact on all adjacent property owners. That is the result of the counties neglecting to, neglecting their legal obligation to modify their zoning regulations to conform with the comprehensive plan. Staff argues that the conservation preservation designation was a mistake, but I can also make the case that the high-density zoning was a mistake. I submit that both mistakes were perpetrated by actions of the staff and that additional review is required. This action to change a commercial zoning district to medium-density residential will negatively impact my property. It will place, it will effectively place lawful and approved uses of right in violation of county noise and odor ordinances. Section 611-216 of the zoning ordinance was designed to restrict and mitigate any adverse impact that these uses might have with regard to their neighbors. By some convoluted reasoning, the staff has decided that this impact is acceptable in reverse. By placing residents within the required 300-foot impact zone violates every tenant of good land use policy as well as county zoning ordinances by immediately placing these existing uses in conflict with other unrelated county ordinances. Additionally, I'm perplexed at the council's refusal to grant the request from the councilman from this district the time and opportunity to investigate all these legitimate concerns of the residents of his district. These involve land use conflicts, stormwater runoff issues, wetland issues, as well as property taxes. Council should at the minimum grant the request to extend the deferral until all issues are resolved and refer this matter back to the planning commission to consider for the potential adverse impact. Thank you.
Kathy Reed?
Good afternoon. I'm Kathy Reed, here also to speak about the Tanner rezoning. I spoke last time and I want to first thank Councilman Anderson for taking the time to do the due diligence or attempt to do due diligence on this property by trying to get a independent wetland expert out. As you've already heard, that's been denied by the property owner. In addition to that, we've spoken with Army Corps of Engineers. There was unauthorized wetland fill done on that property and they had no record of it. They suggested we file a complaint with them directly. We've done that and there's a new open investigation into the wetland fill on that property. So I've heard several, several folks already say you really need to think about sending this back to the commission and doing a complete due diligence and getting a second opinion. What would a second opinion hurt on this wetland delineation? I will tell you, we've lived there for 20 years. That is wet land. Whether it's officially a wetland, I don't know. I've submitted multiple photos to everyone here as well as to the Army Corps of Engineers, encouraging them to come out and they have not done so. I would encourage any of you to come to my house. I'll show you personally. Thank you very much.
Beth Martin?
Good evening. I'm Beth Martin. I live on the three acres that's adjacent to this property. Already have wetlands problems from this property and this owner does not even help to keep the ditch open. He doesn't keep his property, maintain, his trees are dying and falling over on my property. I invite you all to come out. It's hard to make a decision if you can't really see what the impact or what's been going on. I've been in my, on my property probably for over 25 years and I invite you to come out and look at what we already have going on and this is only going to make it worse. And I appreciate, invite you to come, look at this situation and not make a decision till you see what's going on in this county. Thank you.
Steve Strickland?
Good evening. My name is Steve Strickland with the Earthworks Group and I've been around for quite a while here. Grew up here, went to William Young High School, worked for Coastal Council, was on the land use update plan with Jimmy Chandler back in the 90s. When we were doing the land use update plan, you know, we recognized the importance of salt marsh and it's being zoned CP, but the original zoning maps were done back in the 70s. A friend of mine's dad, Charlie Welch, was on the initial planning commission. One of my neighbors, Lynn Bellamy, was on the planning commission. They set the maps. Comprehensive plan followed that, but in terms of, you know, the public comments, I read all the public comments and some of them didn't make sense. Some of them I kind of clicked, scratched my head about. The fact is, there is a core delineation that is approved. It's not an opinion. You don't get a second opinion on a court letter. The court is the final authority and the only authority that says this is a wetland. The trust agreement, I'm not a trust attorney, but my mom's got a trust. We did it for estate planning. Do y'all think that my mom's trust and her will should be open for everybody in the room? Should it be open for county council? I don't think so. I kind of take that personally. As far as asking for a second opinion, in 30 years of doing this job, I have never seen a council or a planning commission ask for a second opinion when you have your own expert did the wetland delineation. If that's what due diligence is, is getting a second opinion from your own expert, I scratch my head again. You know, we met with Keep It Green. You know, we listened to their concerns, we talked to planning staff, we did what they did, what they asked for, a flexible to design district to guarantee what we got. They came and they fully supported us at planning commission. Now I feel like Charlie Brown getting ready to kick a football. You know how that ends? Me too.
Charlie Oates?
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. My original intent was to come tonight was to inform everybody that we did have the US Army Corps of Engineers wetlands approval letter for this property. They are the sole authority to determine the presence or absence of wetlands and so that letter has been issued. There, there will be no changes on the wetlands due to that. That was really all I had to say, but I would like to address Ms. Reed's comment that she made before she left about the wetland violation. The wetland violation that they are investigating is on Ms. Reed's property where she built the bulkhead that blocks the water onto this property. So please don't misunderstand that that violation is being investigated is actually on her property. Thank you.
Marshall Ford?
Good evening, council. My name is Marshall Ford. I live on 512 James Milton Road. What I'm coming up here today is to reference to the VR10 transferring over to rezoning to FAR, putting a grave site in my backyard. Exactly what I said too. I walk out the back door, I really think it's very not fitting for me to just have a cup of coffee and look at the graves. I have no idea who they are. And I have in my possession, close to 200 petition from the community of Planetsville against the rezoning for the grave site being that location. And I've been doing a little bit of the planning thing myself. I think it's equal to, better than or greater than what you already have. Having a grave site and a rezoning in my backyard, I think has no value to our community in that location. So, and that's choice. And it's not, this is the first reading. I want the plant to see from the beginning that we're totally against it. I will give a copy of the petition to the clerk of council so they can have sort of move forward to the second reading. So therefore everyone will know where we stand for us, community against this project being moved forward to rezon. Thank you for your time and thank you for all you do for the county. Oh, for all the people supporting this rezoning. Again, to let you know the community's standing, they're just party selves up. We have more petition. I'll give it to the clerk of council, letting know we are against this. Thank you for your time too.
Reverend Ronald Thompson?
Good evening. My name is Pastor Thompson. I'm the pastor at Covenant Missionary Baptist Church where we went forward to purchase a piece of property of 7.42 acres in the Planetsville commer, community that is bone VR, VR10 at the moment and we're looking to decrease the density in the property. I do understand the community concerns in the property and I also reached out to the folks in the, in the community to try to find a way to make it work. Didn't know that this was happening tonight. We could have had a lot of folks here, but we had a spring session tonight at the Jerusalem Center where 32 churches are in session tonight. So we're looking for a community memorial garden and the property was for sale that was in Planetsville. We put an offer in and we signed a contract on the property. There are so many churches, if you don't know, that's in the African-American community from AME to Baptist, to AME to Baptist churches that don't have a way to bury their loved ones, don't have a place to even call home when it's all over with. And I know this is probably a bit of a sweet situation to some. I talked to some of the members even to ask them, well, what will make a good compromise to the property that we purchased? And to them, they just don't want nothing next to them. Right now, it's on VR10, which we can come in if the church was wanted to and develop 28 houses in that community, but we're not in a church to build houses or development or to have liquor stores or clubs. We're just looking for a place that we don't have to bury our loved ones after the Lord send us home. That's about it.
William Cooper?
For the last few weeks, many interested people have been following the several issues that have unfolded regarding the Tanner parcel. This parcel has been tax advantageously zoned as agriculture, conservation, preservation for decades. The zoning was not done randomly or accidentally. It was done for the purpose of lowering the cost of ownership and in return, the citizens of this county gain in that the land is protected from inappropriate use and drastic changing in zoning. As far as taxes are concerned, are the citizens of Georgetown County simply expected to subsidize landowners for decades until it is time to move on and cash in? The land was zoned with deliberation. It was deliberation as conservation agriculture. It does not magically revert to something else when it is no longer fulfilling whatever goals owner has in mind. Overarching these issues is the fact that land rights do not end at the boundary that is staked out. Other people have property rights too. These people simply cannot be trampled on and ignored when others seek to drastically change where they live. I quote from a general definition of the rights of neighbors. The underlying theme is that adjoining landowners are expected to use their property reasonably without unduly interfering with the rights of owners of the contiguous land. Actions taken by a landowner that are inappropriate deprive an adjoining owner of reasonable enjoyment of his or her property may be an unethical or unlawful use of the property. There are many questions regarding the use and status of this parcel. This issue should be returned until the legal and environmental issues are studied and clarified by independent parties.
Cindy Person?
Good evening, Cindy Person. I'm here as attorney for adjoining landowners and citizens groups. I want to clarify one thing. Keep It Green hasn't changed its position on, on this project. Keep It Green has always and would always support a down zoning. The issue here today, and it's the same issue that we've had since the beginning, is that there's an inconsistency, a drastic inconsistency. And the big question today is whether there are any conservation restrictions that affect this property because the comprehensive plan map has been designated as conservation, preservation for the better part of 20 years. You heard Mr. Stacy referred to a trust. This land had been transferred into and then out of a trust and as of this morning, it was my understanding that this trust had not been reviewed by the county to determine whether it was revocable or irrevocable or whether it contained conservation restrictions. or whether it contained conservation restrictions. If that's changed, we're not aware of it. Our issue is, if you proceed by asking the applicant to disclose the trust agreement before you consider this request and you review it, and it turns out to be revocable and doesn't contain conservation restrictions, then that's great. You can proceed with the security of knowing that you have all the facts. If, on the other hand, it was irrevocable, contains or contains conservation restrictions, then that's a problem and you'll be glad you reviewed it before you proceed. If you do not ask to review the trust agreement, knowing that it exists and you approve this map change, it's a huge risk that has serious consequences. We would respectfully urge you, it's a simple matter to ask. I don't know why you wouldn't ask. I don't know why the owner wouldn't provide it. Send it back to planning commission, ask them to review this and make a decision at that point. Thank you.
Trip Neely.
Hi there. Thank you for giving me a chance to speak tonight. I'm the developer that's trying to do this project. Really, when I started out here, I thought this would be just a slam dunk, to be honest with you. I thought it'd be supported in a lot of ways because it is a drastic downzoning of what is currently there. You know, I had an option on this piece of property. As far as due diligence goes, I don't own this piece of property. Mr. David Tanner gave you the opportunity to represent him and take him through the process. And, you know, I've got an offer or a guy that's wanting to put a beachwear store up on the front of it. And to be honest with you, the way it's zoned now, well, I could probably make more money. But I've got, went through this process here and I got a vision in my head of what this place could really look like as a residential community. And it can be beautiful. It is a beautiful piece of property. I spent almost $100,000 on this thing through due diligence and I don't even own the piece of land. Mr. David Tanner, you know, he doesn't have a 401K planner. He doesn't have a Wall Street background to invest money. He's from the South and he grew up here. He was inherited this piece of land. And this is what a lot of people in the South, we invest in land and that is appreciated over the years in a lot of ways better than Wall Street's done. You know, this is, this is his retirement. And I take this thing pretty seriously. About the wetland issue that's been turned around in the public side, you know, I've done this, played in the dirt for 35 years. There's a ditch on that piece of property. It's shown on the deed, on the map itself, the survey, that I could have cleaned that ditch out and took every piece of water that was on for that thing. But I grew up here. I fished in Pollys Island all my life with Doc Laskott and Bucky Watkins, Newt Watkins and Jimmy Harrelson and caught flounder in spots. And I treasured that place. If I'd have cut a ditch in there, every bit of sediment that there was on that thing would have run right into that place. And that's not what I want to do. I want to put up a silk pit, develop this thing and do it like it's supposed to be and do a good job with you guys. I appreciate your vote tonight.
That's our final speaker for tonight.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We move on down to our consent agenda. There's one matter included on the consent agenda which was previously approved by virtue of the agenda approval process. That's procurement number 20-03AGL. That's order number nine. Phase two environmental site assessment for Georgetown Port Property in the parcel and waterside parcel VCCs. We'll go to our resolutions and proclamations. Resolution number 24-11 to declare May 19 through 25th, 2024 as Public Works Weeks in Georgetown County. We'll have our public information officer, Ms. Ackers.
Council members, this is an annual proclamation that we make for Public Works Week. Public Works employees do important work that relates to the public health, the well-being and the high quality of life of our residents. They are first responders in our county, but often go without notice that some of, the notice that some of the other first responders receive. Public Works Week is intended to shine a light on these employees and the important work that they do on a daily basis. I'll keep it short, but we would ask that you please approve this resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Ackers. Any questions for Ms. Ackers, please, from council? Seeing as there are motions for adoption of resolution number 24-11.
So moved.
The move is there second. Second by Counselor Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? And the motion was made by Counselor Elliott. I'm sorry. We'll go on down to our second reading of ordinances. Ordinance number 24-05, an ordinance to amend the Conference of Plan Future Land Use Map regarding 8.3 acres of TMS number 04-0158-060-00-00. Located along US Highway 17 in Pollys Island from conservation, preservation to medium density residential. Ms. Richardson.
Sir, and I'll be addressing items nine A and nine B together tonight as those both affect the Tanner property. And if you'll be here with me, I know we've heard a good bit about this property, but we haven't actually presented the report. So I want to, need to go over the details of the proposed flexible design district for you. This is property at 10798 on Highway 17 in Pollys Island. It's currently split zoned with-
Richardson, you pull the mic up a little. We can't hear you.
Is that better?
That's better. Thank you.
It's currently split zoned with general commercial in the front, GR, for the five acres in the middle, and then, of course, conservation, preservation zoning in the rear of the track. The property currently contains one house and the CP zoned area in the rear is proposed to remain as CP. The adjacent zoning is general commercial to the west on the other side of 17. There are commercial plan developments to the north and the south. And there's also single-family dwellings to the north and the south along the marsh. And then, of course, the marsh to the east. The proposed flexible design district is for a single-family subdivision that would contain 27 new residential lots. The lots have a minimum lot size of 8,000 square feet. There's a proposed minimum lot width of 60 feet and a maximum height of 35 feet. The proposed setbacks are 20 feet for the front, 10 for the sides, and 15 for the rear. They are also required to adhere to the 90-foot setback off Highway 17. They believe that the FDD will allow them more flexibility in positioning their residential structures on the site to allow them to save the larger trees and allow them to also provide a larger buffer from the commercial properties on either side. If you look at the site plan, you'll see lots 15 and 16 are uniquely shaped and they were specifically designed around a 52-inch live oak that is on the property that will be left in a common area. While the minimum lot size is 8,000 square feet, the lots range in size from 8,000 to 15,800 square feet. The lots that they're proposing along the marsh are in keeping in line with the size of the adjacent marsh front parcels to the north and the south. The proposed net density for this development is 4.06 units per acre, which is considered a medium density. All the lots will have their frontage and their access from a new 50-foot private right-of-way. The revised plan that's in the packet shows sidewalks on both sides of that right-of-way. They are proposing to gate this development. And a DOT encroachment permit will, of course, be needed for the new drive along Highway 17. They are proposing to include their stormwater underneath the new road with a low-impact design. This eliminates the need for large ponds on the property, which, of course, also eliminates the need to remove more trees in order to construct them. They're also proposing to maintain a 50-foot existing vegetative buffer along Highway 17. The revised plan that you do have, and this is new, shows a 10-foot walking path inside that buffer that would allow for pedestrian access to the adjacent commercial properties. They're also proposing, in addition to the single-family lots and amenity center on .47 acres on the track that would contain a pavilion or meeting space, a pool with additional open space and parking. They are also showing a proposed 50-foot coastal protection wetlands buffer along the marsh. This exceeds the 15-foot setback that is currently in the zoning ordinance. They're also proposing a 10-foot setback off the two freshwater wetland sites that are noted on the plan. As has been referenced, a wetlands determination report has been included in your packet and the concurrence letter that was received from the corps was also distributed to you today. There are 9.44 acres of critical area wetlands and .4 acres of non-title or freshwater wetlands, according to the report. They are planning to retain 49 protected trees or just over 1,000 inches diameter breast height to meet the tree canopy protection requirements. Some of this track is located in both the AE and the VE flood zone, so those structures will need to be elevated to comply with our flood zone requirements. The revised plan also shows a 15-foot wide public kayak launch that is proposed along the northern boundary of the property. You heard a little bit about concerns from the adjacent commercial properties in terms of noise affecting the new residents. The applicants did add a statement in their proposed narrative for the development that an acknowledgement will be added to the community documents stating that those adjacent uses are legal and conforming and any associated noise and odors may be present. The current zoning of general commercial and general residential for this track would allow for either commercial development in the front. It would also allow for single-family homes on 10,000-square-foot lots. And then for the GR area in the middle, that would allow for multifamily development of up to 16 units per acre. And the property could be currently developed at these density levels provided all other rules, of course, are complied with, absent any rezoning or other approvals. We do not feel that spot zoning is an issue here due to the large size of the track and to the adjacent single-family residential development. The future land use map designation does show this property as conservation, preservation. Again, I want to clarify, the property is not zoned CP except for the marsh area to the back. This is the future land use map designation as conservation, preservation. The uses that are allowed on the track are, as I have mentioned, those are based on the general commercial zoning and the GR zoning that's currently in place for the uplands of the track. The conservation, preservation designation on the future land use map is somewhat of a mystery. It is not typical for us to designate uplands areas as conservation, preservation, absent some conservation easement on the property. That would be very unusual, especially since there is a structure and there was a structure on this property at the time. We've not been able to find any conservation easements or restrictions for the track. The tracks to the north and south of this parcel are both designated with commercial along the front and then residential in the rear and then, of course, CP on the marsh. An amendment to the map for medium density residential would be warranted for this, in order to support this rezoning request. In conclusion, this is a significant decrease in density compared to what the zoning would allow today. This proposal would eliminate concerns about higher density development along our marsh front and the land use pattern is in keeping with other adjacent properties. They've also included, like I said, the proposed expanded wetland buffers and amenity area walkways and low-impact design as part of their flexible design district. If the project is approved, staff is recommending, following conditions, the amendment to the future land use map, as we discussed. Any signage would comply with the zoning ordinance. The parking for the amenity area should be pervious. And then, of course, final approvals from all regulatory agencies prior to any land disturbance. The planning commission held a public hearing on this item at their February meeting. Three adjacent neighbors spoke at that time with concerns about flooding, the location of the wetlands, the lack of interconnectivity with adjacent commercial development and future noise complaints from new residents. Keep It Green did speak in favor of the rezoning request and the planning commission voted five to one to recommend approval for the rezoning. They also voted five to one to recommend approval for a designation on the future land use map from CP to medium density. And with all that said, I'm sure you have some questions. I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Any questions from council floor? Ms. Richardson, please.
I've got some questions. Is there any location in Pollys Island where the public has access to the creek that you're aware of?
A similar launch like is shown on this plan.
Yeah.
Not that I know of. On the island, I think there is.
Correct. But there's nothing on, not the island.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. And then, just to reiterate, this is a downzone?
Yes.
And how many, how many properties could be put on this with the existing zoning?
Well, let me see the split here between, there's 3.2 acres of general commercial in the front. And so that could be a commercial development of numerous buildings. So, you know, you could have three to four commercial buildings there. You could also potentially have four residential units per acre. So maybe 10 or so, based on the GC zoning. And then the rear, of course, is GR with five acres. So we max out at 16 units per acre, probably. It would be more something like 12. I don't think I've ever seen a project at 16 units per acre. But 12 to the acre, if you assume you've got a couple of acres there, 36, 40 units, somewhere in that range.
And then, just from a high level, can you go over the difference between zoning and the future land use map?
Yes, ma'am. The future land use map is our plan for development for the next 10 years. It's a plan. It's a guide. And it is referenced when we have rezoning requests, when someone comes and wants to change the zoning on their property. That's the guide we look to and we reference for you to provide that information to you. The zoning classification and the zoning map is the regulatory document that we use. So if someone comes to us for a building permit or proposed constructing something, the zoning map is where we go to see how, what are the rules that are in place for that zone.
And is it customary to have two ordinances if those don't align for the future land use map?
Very customary. We have, we have them just about every month.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Makoto. Any further questions for Ms. Richardson, please?
I've got a, I've got a couple. First off, Ms. Holly, this conservation, preservation zoning ordinance. I know that the zoning right now out there in-
Excuse me, Ms. Counselor Anderson.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Should I start over? Talking about conservation, preservation zoning. I know from this, this particular parcel that all the conservation, preservation part of it is marshland between the mainland and the island. Do we, do you know of any properties that we have on, we'll just say the neck to narrow it down, that are actually functional, that have got that designation?
It does come up from time to time, not at this level, where it would be a whole track. But there are cases where the CP line doesn't exactly match up with the wetlands line. You know, you may have some uplands that are within that CP zoning and we've seen a few instances of that. There's nothing perfect about that CP line on the future land use map. You know, it doesn't mean that we got it exactly right every time.
Yeah, I understand that. I just, this is, this has been a learning process for me. I thought that what I was going to be doing here is trying to just downzone more than 27 units. But I learned something about this conservation, preservation zoning. I'd never heard of it before and I've been on council for eight years. So that was a learning experience there. Now, as far as the stormwater, you know, you and I and Ray talked about that creek that runs down the south side border of the property. I know they're taking care of stormwater within the street from what I'm seeing on this site plan. But what about, what about that? Ray was saying he needed the 30-foot right-of-way along there to be able to get a track hoe in there to clean that all out. Did you discuss that with these folks at all?
I think my understanding is that is a private ditch at this time and it is only partially located on the applicant's property. And I don't know if you want to have them address their plans for that ditch or not.
Well, we can, if we haven't, if it's still up in the air, we can wait and talk about that, you know, just in a small group. I was just curious about that. Now, what about how much a lot, our land, we're going to convert from pervious to impervious? Do we have any idea what that is yet?
No, sir. I don't think we have a minimum impervious. And we typically don't for single-family, as you know.
Right.
Typically, for commercial, we require- Typically, for commercial, we require 70% maximum for impervious. We did require that the parking for this amenity area be pervious to try to keep that number down at that location as much as possible, but we don't have a minimum for the residential.
Well, having designed homes in the VE and AE zones and the X zones in every zone, and looking at parking requirements, I'd like to learn more about what we're going to do as far as the size of the driveways, because they'll need some parking. It's going to be a combination of things, as far as I can see, between parking and just being a driveway. And, of course, you know, I'm worried with this. We just finished this stormwater study for the entire Walk 'Em On Neck, and we spent, I think, around $750,000 on that three-dimensional map, and one of the things I want to do from now on out that I'm here is work on the stormwater. I know that some of us have discussed this with ditches and et cetera, et cetera, so I'm getting very touchy about what we're doing with stormwater. So this is the first time that I've seen this come into play, and so I really want to look at that. I think at this point, that's all, the only questions I have.
Thank you. Any further questions for council floor, Ms. Richardson, pertaining to this particular project?
Mr. Chairman, I have a few.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Richardson, out of all the regulations that the applicants have to go through to develop a piece of property, everything that Mr. Neely has done up to this point, have they supplied us with everything we've asked them for?
Yes, sir, I would say, and everything that's required at this stage. You know, of course, there will be more that they'll need to provide and submit.
As the project moves forward.
Yes.
But up to this point, they have satisfied every ordinance that we have on the books to this point?
They've, yes, sir. They've provided what's required for the rezoning application to the FDD.
Okay. The, looking at the property, and I just was reading over the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers When we do a wetland study, is this something we normally get on every piece of property?
Yes, sir.
Is this required? When is this required? Is it on every development or just certain ones?
If there are critical saltwater wetlands involved or wetlands in which the Corps would have jurisdiction, then we would review the delineation, and then we would wait until this letter was issued, certainly before any land disturbance took place on the site.
Was there any problems found with the Corps concerning this letter?
I have not spoken with the Corps. I just received a copy of this letter, but the letter certainly doesn't reference any.
Okay. The, have, out of all the developments that we've done in the past, have we ever gone back and got a second opinion because someone didn't agree with the first opinion on a wetland study?
Not that I'm aware of, no, sir.
Would something like this, if we went back and got a second one, would this set a precedent for the next one that come in, and the next one, and the next one?
I think this body has to take each case before it, you know, with its own certain set of conditions and criteria. I mean, certainly, I think that if it is done here, it would be something that people would request going forward if they had concerns, for sure.
Out of the comments that you've heard tonight, how much property would you guess in Georgetown County is FA?
Maybe even half. I'm hesitant to give you a number, but certainly, as you know, the large majority of property on this side of the bridge outside of the city and its environs are zoned FA. There is more FA probably than you would think on the Walk 'Em On Neck.
And FA stands for what, for those who don't know?
Forest and agriculture, and that is the zoning designation as opposed to the tax designation.
Correct. And forest and agriculture, mainly forest being lumber business, paper business?
Our zoning designation of FA is a really big catch-all, Mr. Newton. It includes timber tracts, it includes a farm, it can also include a cell tower or a vet's office or a nursery. It has a wide list of uses in FA.
So we have a large amount of land that's considered zoned FA.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to make a statement concerning FA. We've heard a lot of derogatory comments concerning FA like it's a bad thing. My father was a farmer for part of his life, my grandfather, his entire life, and my great-grandfather and so forth before then, all were farmers. Most of the people in this room here, I won't ask for a show of hands, but I would be willing to bet most come from farmers. And a large majority of this county population derives their income from the timber business, and we're constantly hearing negative derogatory comments about FA. So the next time you sit down at your table before you eat, maybe you should think of farmer, because that's what put that food on the table. When that storm's outside blowing 50 miles an hour, and you're sitting in your house nice and cozy, think of forester for providing the wood that built that home that you're sitting in. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Council Newton. Any further comments?
I've got some comments there.
Council Anderson, I think, Mr....
Oh, I'm sorry. No, you go ahead. You go ahead.
Just got a couple.
Elliot.
Holly, as it is right now, as Mr. Neely stated in the public comment, the GC designation, if he wanted to put a beach for a store there, there's not a thing we can do about it. He can do it and never comes before council, correct?
That's correct. This is on general commercial. It would allow for a retail store. It would have to meet the overlay design requirements, stormwater approvals, and all those necessary approvals, but it wouldn't need to come here for a rezoning.
So if he wanted to do it, there's nothing we can do about it? He can, it's zoned for what he could do, correct?
Yes, sir. It is zoned for that.
Same way with GR. If he wanted to go in there and put high-density in there, he could do it.
He can comply with all the other requirements? Yes, sir.
He can do that, okay. As far as the zoning and the tax, those are two different designations. The zoning says FA, but the tax is based off what the property is used for, correct?
Yes, I do not believe that the zoning influences the tax assessment.
Okay, so...
So it could be zoned FA, but it could be used differently, and it's my understanding that tax is going to be based on the use.
On the use of it. So we, okay, that's good. I've made my point. Thanks, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Anderson. Please direct your question pertaining to this particular issue to Ms. Richardson.
Pardon?
Please direct your question to Ms. Richardson. We have discussion later.
I can do that. I am a little concerned about the forest and agriculture thing. As you all know, I spent three months last year looking into property taxes, and bottom line is, without getting into detail, 50 years ago, the legislature decided they wanted to give farmers and timber people a 25% discount in their property taxes.
We can discuss the matter later, but if you have any questions for Ms. Richardson, please direct it to her.
No, I was just rebutting what I just heard, so we can get back to that when we get into discussion, and that's fine. Thank you.
I've got one more question regarding the taxes, because that's come up a couple of times. To your knowledge, has the property owner paid taxes, and are they current in those taxes?
I cannot speak to that, Ms. McCarty, but I know that Mr. Holt is here from the assessor's office. I don't know if he can answer that question for you. That might be more...
It was a little rhetorical. I've actually got the records right here, and they are.
One quick question, Holly. I'm sorry. Are you done?
Yep.
The five marsh lots that are going to be built along the marsh over there, they are going to have to be raised, correct?
Yes, sir. They're in a V-zone.
Okay. Is there some, do we, do you know if those lots are going to be raised piers or are they going to be filled?
I think, last I heard from the engineer, they're hoping to minimize the amount of fill they're going to have to bring in, and I do think they will be raised on piers.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Any further questions for Ms. Richardson pertaining to this particular ordinance? Ms. Richardson, just have a couple really. There were some comments made during the public comment section regarding restrictions and conservation easements and all those type things. When the application was received by you, did the county did any type of record check in the clerk's office to see whether any restrictions on this property?
We did. Someone from our staff did research to locate the deeds for the property. We found three separate deeds and pulled those. We did not come across any sort of deed restrictions in terms of a conservation easement of any kind. And again, that's just my stat. It's not a complete title search. We're certainly not professionals at that. That's not what we normally do, but we did pull the deeds as a check because of the CP designation on the future land use.
And you didn't find anything on the record restricting its use or anything to any particular use?
We did not, no, sir.
Okay. Now, when the application was submitted, developers, they presented a plan to you also, is that correct?
Yes, sir, the FDD plan that requires that.
Okay, and the plan sort of outlined what they intended to do with the property?
Yes.
It showed the driveways, the tight driveway that the county is kind of recommending for them, a proposed driveway, I should say.
It did show the new roadway and the lots. It didn't show the individual driveways for each house.
Okay. And one other question, really, with the wetland delineation, the Corps of Engineers are experts in that particular area, is that correct?
The Corps of Engineers, yes.
Yes.
They have jurisdiction there.
They have jurisdiction there, and the county don't rely on them to make those particular determinations?
Yes, sir.
And they have made a determination regarding this property?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay. You've heard the presentation, thank you, Ms. Richardson. Okay. You have heard the presentation from Ms. Richardson regarding ordinance number 24-05 and ordinance number 24-06. We'll take them one at a time. We will first, we will first look for a motion pertaining to ordinance number 24-05 and ordinance to amend the comprehensive plan. Is there a motion pertaining to ordinance number 24-05?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We approve ordinance number 24-05.
We have a motion for approval from Councilman Newton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Council Elliot. Any discussion?
Yes, sir, I do have some discussion. And since we were on the topic of property and taxes, I'm going to expand a little bit on what I had to say, talking about what the legislative branches of state government has done over the last 50 years. They put a great formula together for giving the 25% discount in property taxes to all FA zone property. And Mr. Holt's out here in the audience, he helped me get that together, and I'm going to call on him in a minute to explain some of the other things that I've just found out recently. When I did that study, I was under the impression that the only property that could have this agriculture qualification was FA zone property. And this particular set of ordinances that came out, I've learned a lot about that in the last month doing due diligence on that side of it, when we were looking at how much property taxes had been paid on this piece of property, and it wasn't making any sense to me. But I finally finished up my due diligence today with the Department of Revenue, and I'm going to let or ask Mr. Holt to explain the way he has to do business on all property that's over five acres, and correct me if I'm wrong, that has some trees and some cleared land or whatever. So, Mr. Holt, if you would, can you stand up and explain to everybody that it's a bigger issue than just FA property?
Mr. Council Anderson, I think we are going beyond the scope of this particular motion. That's a discussion for another day. We're talking about whether we should approve second reading of ordinance number 24-05 and ordinance to amend the comprehensive plan, future land use map regarding 8.3 acres of land. We're not talking about how the state assesses taxes for forest and agricultural property. So I think that's beyond the scope of our agenda.
Well, I will say this in defense of my constituents, is that they had issues with this sort of thing, and that's the reason I bring it up. And it is, as far as I'm concerned, part of the discussion. It may be not the focus, which is just, first, change in the zoning, the future land use map, and, second, change in the zoning to flexible design district, but all of this information that I've gathered, listening to people, is pertinent to this, and I'd like to make it clear what's going on. And I did find out that, from Mr. Holt and my contacts at the Department of Revenue, that what has gone on with this piece of property, there's no problem with it whatsoever. And I'm sure that those folks out there that are representing Mr. Tanner are glad to hear that. I was thinking there was something going on there, and there's not, and that's what I was going to have Mr. Holt explain, because it is pertinent, and I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion on the floor that's been properly moved and second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Please note, Council Anderson, opposed. We're moving down to ordinance number 24-06. Is there a motion pertaining to ordinance number 24-06 and the ordinance to amend the official zoning map of Georgetown County regarding 8.3 acres?
So moved.
It's moved by Council McCarty for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Newton. Okay. Any discussion?
Yes. Again, I'm going to use my time, and this time, I'm going to speak more to this wetlands delineation thing. And I'll take you back to when I was a young man, we had a president by the name of Ronald Reagan, and what I learned from him was trust but verify, and I've used that throughout my career more than once. And when I heard what these folks had say to me about the possibility of wetlands being filled in, I'm going to take you back to 1972, when the Clean Water Act was signed by then-President Nixon. And I can remember as a young guy then, people were complaining because it gave the authority on a mud puddle on a farm to the Corps of Engineers. It went too far. And over the years, things slacked off a little bit, and around 1985, the Corps of Engineers started taking a real close look at wetlands, because what I've learned also in Ori County and Georgetown County, there were a lot of people filling in wetlands back before 85, and then they got involved in that, and things started to change, and...
Council Anderson, is there a discussion to have regarding this?
I'm making my point here. I'm not out of order. This is part of the discussion, and I want to explain what the people in my district, the problems they had, you heard them say, and I'm working on that, and bottom line is...
Discussion is with council, Council Anderson.
Pardon?
The discussion is with councilors, not the ordinance.
And, okay, and I'm talking to councilors, and so what I am still, I have been talking to the Corps of Engineers and DHEC about this situation, and I'll just say to you all that as far as this wetland situation, the story's not over yet, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion prior to our first reading? Is there a motion to amend to incorporate the revised conceptual plan dated April 5, 2024?
So moved.
Moved by Council Elliot. Is there a second on the amendment?
Second.
Second by Council McCarty. Any discussion regarding the amended motion? The amendment, I should say. All in favor of the amended, all in favor of the amended motion, please raise your hand. Oppose? Okay, Councilor Anderson opposed the amended motion. Now, all in favor of the main motion incorporating the amended motion, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries, Councilor Anderson, oppose. Motion carries. We'll, we'll move on down to ordinance number 24-07, an ordinance to enact fund balance management policies. Ms. Langston?
Good seeing you. Mr. Chairman, good day, Council. Ordinance number 2407 is to establish a fund balance policy for the general fund. You may recall, this was presented to you prior to the meeting last time at the budget workshop. The main part of this policy states that we will maintain a 15 million or 40% of the annual budget in the general fund. It does allow for us to go below that 40% in the event of certain natural disasters or unusual occurrences. But we do, we will have to supply a plan to reestablish that fund balance back up to the 40% within a reasonable amount of time. It also allows for a disaster recovery fund to be established from transfers from the general fund. And that, we're putting a $3 million goal on that over a five-year period. This was presented for first reading by title only, so if you approve, you'll need to amend the ordinance or for the text, so.
Thank you, Ms. Langston. Any questions for Ms. Langston pertaining to ordinance number 24-07? Seeing done. Is there a motion pertaining to ordinance number 24-07?
So moved.
Move for approval by Councilor Anderson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Elliott, any discussion? Is there a motion to amend ordinance number 24-07 to incorporate the text previously introduced by title only?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Councilor Newton, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion regarding the amendment? All in favor of the amended motion, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Now, we're going back to the main motion to, which includes the incorporated text. All in favor of the main motion with the incorporated text, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you. We're going down to our first reading of ordinances. Please note that the first reading of ordinance will be read into the record by title only. We have several of them tonight. Ordinance number 24-08, an ordinance to amend the comprehensive plan, future land use map regarding 7.0 acres located off Grassy Lane in a brown-spraying community, identified as TMS number 02-0404-011-16-02 from low density to medium density residential. Ordinance number 24-09, an ordinance to rezon approximately 7.0 acres off Grassy Lane in a brown-spraying community identified as TMS number 02-0405-011-16-02 from forest agricultural to village residential, to village 10,000 square feet residential VR10. Ordinance number 2410, an ordinance to amend the comprehensive plan, future land use map regarding 5.15 acres located off South Island Road in Georgetown County, identified as TMS number 01-1010-015-00-00 from low density residential to commercial. Ordinance number 24-11, an ordinance to rezone a portion of one parcel totaling approximately 5.15 acres located on South Island Road in Georgetown County, South Carolina, identified as TMS number 01-1010-015-00-00 from forest agricultural to forest agricultural commercial. Ordinance number 24-12, to amend the future land use map for three lots totaling 2.13 acres located on the southwest side of Pendygrass Avenue in Mersey Inlet, identified as tax map numbers 41-0180-012-00-00 number 41-0180-013-00-00 from low density residential to commercial. You have ordinance number 24-13, to rezon three parcels totaling approximately 2.13 acres on the southwest side of Pendygrass Avenue, approximately 400 feet west of Highway 17 bypass in Mersey Inlet, identified as tax map numbers 41-0180-012-00-00 number 41-0180-013-00-00 and number 41-0180-014-00-00 from one and a half acre residential to general commercial. And you have ordinance number 24-14, to rezon approximately 16.74 acres located off Gallup Road in the Andrews area of Georgetown County, identified as TMS number 01-0442-026-14-00 from general commercial to heavy industrial. Ordinance number 24-15, to rezon approximately 36 acre located in Litfield Landings, identified as TMS number 04-0134-001-04-00 from general commercial to 10,000 square feet residential. Ordinance number 24-16, to rezon 7.42 acres located on the north side of James Milton Road at its intersection with Jackson Village Road in Georgetown County, identified as tax map number 03-0468-006-01-03 from village 10,000 square feet residential to forest agricultural residential. Ordinance number 24-17, an ordinance to adopt the 2024 updated population element as part of the county's comprehensive plan. Ordinance number 24-18, an ordinance to make appropriations for ordinary county purposes for Georgetown County for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024 and ending June 30, 2025, to provide for the expenditure thereof, to provide for revenues for the payment thereof, as well as adjustments to various fee schedules. And we have ordinance number 24-19, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax incentive agreement by and amount Georgetown County, South Carolina, the county, a company identified for the time being as Project Sweetgrass and our other project sponsors collectively the companies, pursuant to which the county shall covenant to accept certain negotiated fees in lieu of ad valorem taxes with respect to the establishment or expansion of certain facilities in the county collectively the project, as well as other benefits and economic development incentives to be made available to the companies and the project and other matters relating thereto. Thank you. We'll now, we'll now move down to the approval of our minutes. I think all the councilperson have received their minutes in their packets. Is there a motion regarding the minutes from our March 26, 2024 meeting?
So moved.
It's moved by Councilor Carolina, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Elliott, any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries, minutes are accepted. Any further business to come before council this evening? Seeing done, is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
It's moved by several councilmen for adjournment, is there a second?
Second.
Second by several councilpersons. All in favor, any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? We stand adjourned. Thank you.